Uncomfortable silence, but that has come to an end. Good evening, I call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Bow to me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, what an awesome time it is in the history of the city of Cartersville, and what a great week it is to celebrate so much, and so much we have to be thankful for. And we are so grateful tonight for the independence that we have in our country, our freedoms, our liberties, and just the quality of life that we enjoy here in the United States and in this great city of Cartersville. Tonight we just ask special blessing on our firefighters as they have a change in their structure and their leadership. We thank you so much for Chief Carter and all he's meant to our city as we see him depart to retirement, we thank you for him. And as we see new leadership come in, we ask a special blessing on them and their leadership team as they move the city of Cartersville Fire Department forward. Thank you for our firefighters and our police department, our first responders that serve us so, that serve us every, that serve us in our city every day and put their life out there, and we are gratefully and very grateful for them, for eternally grateful for them. Thank you again for this wonderful week of celebration of our independence. Thank you for this opportunity to come and do the business of the city of Cartersville. We ask that you would go before us, and we'll give you the praise and glory for all that's done, and it's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the Father and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Drake, the floor please.
Harry Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Kerry Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Kerry Doc, Ward 5. He's here. I mean, it's still showing he's here. Thank you. Alyssa Cornell, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. The first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from June the 20th, and council you had an opportunity to look these over, and now would be the time to make any changes to those minutes. If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. When I got here, I was excited, there's a room full of people, I was like, man, everybody came to watch me run a meeting. I guess that's not the case. But alas, we do have something that's pretty special tonight, and Mr. Porter, I'll let you get us started with that.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to recommend for a recommendation for Hagan Champion to be the next fire chief, but I would like to express my honor and privilege being able to work for Chief Carter for a number of years. He's done well for us, he's setting his sights on retirement, so thank you for your many years of dedication, service to our employees and our city, and I'd like to make the recommendation to Hagan Champion to be the next fire chief for us.
Okay, council, you have before you a recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ms. Drake will now come down and swear you in.
Ms. Drake, Rockingham. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Georgia, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office to help you guide?
I would like to start off by saying thank you to the mayor and council, and Mr. Porter. I would also like to thank the members of the Carterville Fire Department, family and friends. I would also like to thank my wife Sandy, as I would not be standing here today without her loving support. I recognize and acknowledge the importance of this promotion, and only am I representing the city of Cartersville, but the fire department. This has been home to me, and it has served me well. It's an honor to lead amongst the men and women of the Carterville Fire Department and continue a legacy, dedicated service within above all mission. As chief, leading an elite department is no easy task, but I plan to do so constantly, staying aware of the risk and factors that contribute to the success of our organization. Working through the ranks of the Carterville Fire Department has given me the knowledge and tools to continue a tradition of excellence within the organization. I look forward to serving the community and our members with honor, pride, and integrity for years to come. I would again like to say thank you to everyone, and thank God for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you.
We are delighted to have so many people here to share that moment with you, Hagan, and again, y'all are all welcome to stay and watch the rest of the proceedings, but I also know, I know who the leader of the group is. Thank y'all for being here, y'all have a great evening. I was waiting for one firefighter to hang behind, just to make, just made me feel good, but I guess not. All right, Mr. Menino, you get to follow that with AZ 24-003.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a proposed annexation of two small tracts at the intersection of Highway 113 and Fiber Drive. One of the tracks is .42 acres, other one .48 acres, remnants of the Highway 113 project. The parent tract is currently in the city jurisdiction zone, heavy industrial, I believe it's about 3.5 acres, and they're looking to bring this into the city jurisdiction. The planning commission did review this application, they did recommend approval of the application, there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. And so at this time, we'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of the request, AZ 23, excuse me, 24-03, and ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to do so at this time, keeping in mind this is the second reading, and anything that was in the first reading is remaining in the record. Don't let that deter you, Carl, come on.
Say hello.
Hi.
Carl Lugez, 114 Old Mill Road. I'm just here to answer any further questions, mayor and council, if you have any, but I do understand that everything in the first reading relate over. If there's any clarifications I need to make, I'd sure be happy to make those, and we would like to see zoning requests.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lugez? Thank you, sir. Again, we'll continue the zoning portion of the request, 24-0, AZ 24-03, asking anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of that request and open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of AZ 24-03, and again, ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the annexation public hearing for AZ 24-03. I will turn it over to council for discussion, questions, or consideration for the annexation portion of this request, AZ 24-03.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously, and the next item is the zoning portion of this request, AZ 24-03.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Randy, continue us on with AZ 24-04, please.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This is a proposed de-annexation with no zoning involved with this particular request. It's a .29 acre tract that was formerly part of the old water department offices. They had purchased it from the city in hopes to do improvements at the corner of Walnut Grove and Cummings Road as part of a county residential development that's out there. The planning commission did recommend approval of this application, or de-annexation application, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you, Randy, and I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of this de-annexation request. It'll be the only public hearing we have on the topic for AZ 24-04, and ask anybody wishing who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time.
Again, Carl Lugez, 114 Old Mill Road, just here to answer any questions, should you have any? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lugez at this time? Thank you, sir. And again, public hearing for AZ 24-04. Anybody wishing to speak may do so now. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for AZ 24-04, and turn it over to council for consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, you've got a purchase, CityView Annual Software Maintenance.
Yes, like it says, this is our annual update for our, the maintenance of our CityView software. It covers our licensing, permitting, and inspections and code enforcement. The contract is $24,112.23, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Morgan, you've got a handful this evening as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. Bring the four-year request to purchase the office furniture for the newly renovated electric apartment facility in the amount of $86,206.75 from Office Furniture Expo. We're requesting this, this will be delivery, assembly, and installation in the facility.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the amendment to the utilities ordinance regarding electric rates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. This is a amendment to the base, the administrative charges for each of our rate classes. This is also a cleaning up of language and our rate riders and the other details there, so we've done a thorough, deep dive on that, and this is the culmination of that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
And also, I guess I need to say, this is as amended since the first reading, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Continue on, please, Freddie.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is an architectural services agreement with Edunay Designs for the restroom additions at the depot, and also renovation of that first floor of the depot in the amount of $29,100. This is our first step in this process to getting the architect on board and then looking at a construction manager at risk.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
I would like to make a motion to approve the addition of recognition of the African-American restroom renovation.
Okay, so moved, and then is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. GAS Software License and Support Agreement.
Yes, sir. This is, this is a step we've taken. Futura Systems is who we want to contract with to move our electric system CAD data over into a Esri-based GIS system. They'll also provide a field pour inspection, staking, design, and training with this new system. It's in the amount of $132,237.50. We're requesting approval of this amount and the agreeable contract once legal is signed off on it, to be, to have the mayor sign that contract when we receive that, please.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that, Mr. Archer, does that motion need to include upon approval of?
Include what?
Does it need to include like upon approval of?
Legal.
Legal, or is it fine as is?
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do.
Okay, do you mind amending your motion?
Amending it by asking for approval among?
The legal contract. We sent it back with the amendments from Arch and Lovell, we have to receive that portion back, so.
Yeah, just making the motion to approve it upon review of legal?
I'm making motion to approval upon legal.
Thank you.
Do I have, is that second? Who made the second? Who did that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Question before we go through.
Sure.
So, are we not to sign that yet?
No, no.
Gotcha. I just wanted to confirm.
And I've requested that, they sent it in my name, I requested it to be a docu-sign in the mayor's name, so they have received.
You talked about this, I'm sorry.
That's fine. They've received the revisions that Keith had, and he marked up quite a few items. I think I got their design back this afternoon, but we know we need to have time to look at it.
Okay, dope.
Okay.
Next item.
Okay, this is, the last item is a tree trimming services contract. Upon review of four qualified bids, we had a committee look at this, and we want to recommend Bison Tree Service as a service provider. We keep a tree servicing contract that trims our system yearly, so we're asking to move forward with this contract with Bison.
Okay. Questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, for Freddie, please. Obviously, we have a new electric director, Tom McKee, but I'd like to thank Freddie for your, couple months on service of stepping up. He stepped, filled in admirably for us, and I would publicly thank you for that time.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Well done. Mr. Morgan, thank you. All right, Dan, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Structural analysis, as Jim Croft kind of shared through the work session, this is a structural analysis looking at the 19 North Irwin Street building, possibly saving the wall along Church Street and Irwin Street. This is some additional cost, but obviously try to save some of that historical building there, and recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsyth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This is a request for approval for a janitorium cleaning services contract for the new water administrative complex. We received proposals for that service. The best proposal, lowest price and best proposal was from Stratus Building Solutions, a local cleaning service franchise for a price of $870 per month. Requires a 12-month renewable service contract, and recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. Chief Carter, you were up, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. First item that I bring before you tonight is we will be placing our two newest fire trucks in service actually tomorrow, and we will be asking you tonight, first of all, to surplus our two oldest trucks. This is a 2001 Pierce Sabre truck and a 2002 Pierce Sabre. Both of those trucks have served at our city well. In addition to that surplus, we've been approached by Union County, the Union County Combination Fire Department, a volunteer organization. They have asked to be considered to purchase these trucks from the city. They've let us know that they have the ability to pay up to $10,000 per truck, and these two trucks will become their first-line trucks there in Blairsville in Union County. The question in the work session of, you know, well, you know, if we're having to get rid of them, you know, how does it work for them? Well, they're using 1986 and older model trucks now. So these trucks, while they're 23 years old here in Cartersville, it's a major upgrade for that organization, that community. Also, our trucks are designed now, they're larger, they have to carry way more equipment, call volume's extremely high, so that's one reason that these trucks are no longer suitable for us. But Union County has shown interest in purchasing these trucks, they have the ability to pay up to $10,000 each. We would ask that you would surplus the trucks, sell these trucks to Union County would be my request, at the cost up to $10,000 apiece. We have researched the actual price the best that we could, used fire trucks, it's hard to determine, but with the Fire Trader Magazine, looking with Pierce Manufacturing, these trucks are valued anywhere between $5,000 to $15,000. On the open market, you'd never really know. The last truck that we did on Gov. deals did not really do as much as we expected. So that would be my request this to you this evening, and I'll also ask if you do approve the surplus and the sale to Union County, we would ask for legal to draw up all the legal requirements to complete the sale, with it being an as-is purchase, no warranties implied. That would be my consideration for you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And again, I need to make sure, we're going to make motion to approve the surplus and the sale and the legal contract. Thank you. And Calvin, is your second still hold with that?
Yes, it does.
Thank you to you both. Motion in a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Next item.
Yes, sir. Literally, my final item that I bring before you, mayor and council, is a purchase of an appliance package for our new station, Station 5, that's really coming out of the ground and doing extremely well. This is for 10 appliances that will go within that station. This is the microwaves, the ovens, the stoves, washers, and dryers, et cetera. It does not include the gear washer or the extractor that will be brought to you a little bit later time. We are asking for this purchase to be, go through Sam Franklin, who is our preferred vendor here, because they can match the appliances. They're also a local vendor that handles all of our warranty items, and they handle all of our service contract. The pricing is competitive, $18,049.90. This does fall within our contract and our budget for our FFE, our furniture fixture package for Station 5. We would request approval of this purchase.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries unanimously.
If I may.
Please go ahead.
One privilege, and I'll be extremely brief. One of my greatest honors has been being fire chief for this community. I would like to thank the mayor of the council, I'd like the past councils, everyone that's been here, your commitment and the city administration's commitment to the public safety of this community, being as a high priority has made my job easier. My job is easy because I have a great staff, really strong firefighters, and this department's been going on since 1889. I've been honored to have just a small piece of that, and it's going to do extremely well going forward. But thank y'all, thank the citizens, God bless.
We'll have more opportunities to get weepy at a later date over him. Hard act to follow. That's right. Mr. Dixon, you have the next three, please.
Yes, sir. The gas system is requesting the purchase of a 22-foot, 8-ton, better-built equipment trailer to support a recently approved fourth crew. Reinhardt Equipment Company of Rome is the sole source provider in the area for this type of trailer. They submitted a bid of $12,635. This is not a budgeted item, but will be paid for with gas revenues and council's approval, except their quote is recommended.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. As part of the SK America natural gas service line installation, this project requires the tapping and stopping of two 12-inch line stopper fittings. The gas system does not have the tools nor the expertise to perform this operation. Therefore, we request a quotation from the manufacturer's contractor who provides this operation as a sole-source provider. SJ Patterson Company LLC of Alabama provided a quotation in the amount of $28,962 to perform the tapping and stopping operation labor. They have satisfactory completed many tapping and stopping projects for us in the past, and they're fully capable of performing the work. This is a budgeted item, council's approval with quotes recommended.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Michael.
As a stipulation of the recent easement acquired for the SK America project, the gas system is required to relocate an existing 12-inch natural gas main that's in conflict with future improvements of a existing driveway accessing the property owner's parcel. The gas system requests proposals for this relocation from three contractors experienced in this type of construction. Two proposals were received, and the lowest proposal submitted by Southeastern Natural Gas Services of Rome Incorporated of Lindell, Georgia, in the amount of $96,641. This is a budgeted item, council's approval to award this proposal as recommended.
Thank you. Questions for Michael on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. While Mr. Wilson is making his way up, chair will entertain a motion to add two items to the agenda.
To move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Two items added. Mr. Wilson, you're up, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. First item we have is solid waste. Division of Public Works needs 200-yard waste carts, which are the green Kirbys that you've seen on, seen on the video screen, and we did receive some prices. The lowest bidder, lowest price was from Auto Environmental Systems for a total price of $11,210. That does include shipping. This is a budgeted item. Public Works recommends approval of this purchase.
Thank you. Wade, chair will entertain a motion.
I have, of course.
Okay, question, I'm sorry.
This discussion, and I missed it in the session, you said yard waste?
Yes, this is yard waste.
And that was grass clippings and?
Grass clippings, yes.
Outstanding. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. You've got another one, don't you?
Yes, there's one for this.
Thought you were trying to get away.
No, no. Yes, our next one's the GDOT Grassdale Road Improvements. City of Cartersville has been requested to submit a sponsor's recommendation letter for the Transportation Alternative Program, or better known as TAP. It's a process in conjunction with the local endorsement of our project framework agreement from GDOT. There's been $3,506,000, or, excuse me, $3,506,749 approved for the construction and associated utility work on this, through this TAP grant. This grant's an A20 grant, meaning 80% is covered through GDOT. The other 20% is a local match between the local sponsors, which in this case is the city of Carzville and Bartow County. So therefore, we'll have to contribute $350,674.90. The sponsor's recommendation letter states that the city of Carzville will retain the services of a consultant for construction oversight for $193,440, which is proposed with the supplemental agreement number four through Southeastern Engineering. That was the design engineer on this project. The $193,440 for construction oversight will count towards this overall local match, and will be a non-budgeted item that will be paid for through SPOST, and split evenly between Bartow County and the city of Carzville. The public works recommends the approval of this sponsor's recommendation letter and the supplemental agreement number four to keep this project moving forward.
Sorry to wake you up there, yeah.
Yeah, I know. There was a lot in that. And as a side note, once this project gets forward, it looks like it'll take about a year, so we hope to get the PFA, the project framework agreement, next month. Well, we do have it now, we have to have legal review it. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring it to you next month, or next, next meeting, actually.
July 18.
Thank you. July 18?
Yep.
Okay, if you say so. All right. If there's any discussion, if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the sponsor's recommendation letter and supplement agreement number four.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, you have the first item. Oh, we still got Lee Street. You were trying to leave one earlier.
I thought I'd hang around for a while.
Sorry about that, Wade.
No problem. On top of my game tonight. So several years ago, the City of Cartersville purchased several pieces of property that had flooding through a FEMA grant. The houses were removed. We did reduce the impervious area. However, there has been some flooding downstream from there that caused some problems. And we put this on the ARPA wish list a while back, and we're to the point to where we now need to provide engineering services for this. We talked to Consolidated Technologies Incorporated, CTI, who has done this type of work before,